We will call the meeting in order. Scotta Community Schools in partnership with its parents, students and the community is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice of this meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice of the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. A copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the front of the meeting room. At this point, like to congratulate Rene Sayre and Guadalupe Moreno for their election to the Board. And also congratulate Chuck on his real election to the Board as well. In front of you should have a oath of office in your pile of information there. And if you would please read through that and sign off on that as part of your process. And there, and again, as long as we get this before the end of the, you know, at the end of the meeting or whatever, there's also a conflict of interest form that we'll need to all complete and have signed off as well.
That conflict of interest form, you don't have to turn it in tonight. Because you want to think about who want to have a conflict with, and all you have to do is just disclose it. Doesn't say it keeps you from doing anything any other board member, but you have to disclose it. There used to be a nepotism policy in there, but since the law requires you to come forth with your conflict, then what I have to watch is anytime that something happens and then I have to make sure that you're either within or have to turn it into the Secretary of State.
I had a question on that, that conflict of interest statement. I think I remember asking this last year and you probably gave an explanation, but I'm not remembering, so I apologize.
That's right.
It does, on that second bullet point there, it did say that elected officials of school districts are not to use this form, but the C two A form. So I, I don't know, I don't know if that made any.
That's the one that we got from our attorney.
Okay. Well.
And I will ask him if there's another form, but that's the one that he gave us, so.
I think I remember asking that a year ago and I guess we filled out this one and obviously wasn't a problem, but.
Let me check on it again, because I know.
It says we need the C dash two A and this is the C dash two, so. Not sure what that means, but.
Okay, I will ask our attorney. I'm sure you won't have a conflict between now and the next meeting.
I guess other forms that you should have at your location. We have some requests, if there's a specific committee or committees that you would like to potentially serve on. Including on that document is some goals that you may like to achieve as part of the Board or some individual, even some individual goal that, that you perceive that needs to be addressed. I guess something I would ask you to write on that particular document as well, if there are some specific conflicts as far as days of the week, those types of things, maybe add that on the bottom too, so that some of those items might be addressed as well. And I know, you know, everybody has conflicts every now and then, and if it's a sporadic thing, that's, that's not a big deal. But if it's something that, hey, I know I have this going on every Monday night or every Wednesday night, whatever, try to make sure you disclose that so we can get that organized as well. In addition to that, a couple of other documents that are there with regard to, you know, maybe things that helped you decide to run for the Board, you know, things that as far as where you feel we rate with regard to policies that we put in place or leadership or community relations or whatever that case might be. Try to put some type of score there for us. And, and again, then there's our self evaluations that we look at, okay. These are the things that, you know, as far as what are responsibilities and roles and could be and should be. And, you know, so just kind of helping us keep in check with, with where we are that in, in those regards personally as well, so. And normally you just turn that into the office.
Well, they just.
Or you're back in.
We don't.
Need to have that, okay, so.
I think one of the other things is there used to be what was called a code of conduct for board members, but it was so sporadic that the attorneys have dropped that, but you guys kept that. And so when you look at code of ethics for board members, that's why you have that and it's not a policy anymore. So it's not a requirement, but it's just, just helps you to operate within each other's expectations. So it's not, it's not a requirement that you have to do that, but it's no longer in policy.
I guess, you know, like I said, I look at it as kind of a self evaluation tool. So if we feel that there are things that are, you know, really on the low, low end of things, it's something to discuss. And maybe there's some actions we can develop around it as well, so. Okay.
Those of you who pulled the board meeting up, the way that this thing works, I leave the meeting. And so as Rich goes through, if you click on yours and it says follow, it will automatically go to that, to that next whatever I clicked to. Rather than tie you up with the computer, if you click follow, it'll automatically push it to the next agenda item. But that's the only down thing about a computerized meeting is that it sometimes gets attention more than your interaction, so. It's a way to kind of free you up and help you stay with the meeting.
Needing to have another TV on both sides of the room. Okay. I think we're at the point of election of officers. So relinquish control.
Okay, according to policy two oh three oh one, all that time when the superintendent shall act as student chairmanship. And it's just for the process of nomination for the Board President, once that is done. The Board, any Board member can nominate anybody for Board President. Okay, nominations do not need a second, they need a nomination. If there is only one and a Board member makes a motion, all motions take, take a second. So as I explained in there, if you, if you have a nominee and there are no more nominees, you can make a motion that nomination cease and cast unanimous ballot. Otherwise voting will take place on the little pads that you have in front of you. If there's more than one, those will be turned into Sally and Sally will read the recordings. Okay, so pretty simple process. So I would say, is there a nomination for Board President?
I'll nominate Rich Roberts for the President of the Board.
Are there any other nominations for the Board President?
I'd move to cease nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Rich Roberts for President.
Second, motion's been made to cast unanimous ballot.
Second.
Chuck, second stat. Sally, please call the roll call.
Roberts.
I'll abstain.
Yes, Misha.
Yes.
Moreno?
Yeah.
Sayre? Yes. Bobrovic.
Yes.
I was Board President long enough.
Yeah, all right. I will take motions for Vice President. Well, I will nominate Brian Bobrovic for Vice President. Any other nominations? If not, I move to cease nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Brian for Vice President.
I will second that.
Moving to second it, Sally, who would take the role?
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Sayre?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Are you going to vote?
I don't know if I can.
Yeah. Billy Seth?
Yes. Rich threw me for a loop there.
Okay, I will entertain motions for Secretary of the Board.
There are two positions, Rich, the President and the Secretary. You sign a lot of documents. And you have a recording secretary, so it's not like you have to take minutes at a meeting or something, but it's mostly that record, that secretary is the person who signs. Cause there's usually a President and a second or a Secretary to sign.
All of the contracts.
All the contracts, all the teacher contracts.
Well, not to throw anybody under the bus, but I would nominate Nina to fulfill that role. Are there any other nominations?
I'd move to cease nominations and cast unanimous ballot, unanimous ballot for Nina Lenusa for Secretary.
I'll second that motion. Sally, call the roll, please.
Misha?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
I will.
All right, I would entertain a motion for Treasurer of the Board of Education.
I'm making Justin check for the Board.
Are there any other nominees? Well, I would move to close, cease nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Chuck Mieschek for Treasurer. Moving to second it, Sally, if you would call the roll, please.
Moreno?
Yes.
Sayre?
Yes.
Bobrovic?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Yes, I will vote on this and then I will abstain when we vote or discuss the wages for this position.
Yeah. Good, good call. It's a good call. That's a good call. All right. Delegate, delegate to the Board, NASB delegate for the Board.
Just Rich, you want to enlighten us again on what that responsibility is?
Basically, the Board has a representative at the, at the state conference that basically votes or is eligible to go and vote for and, and raise questions with regard to policies that are currently on the docket for the State Board of Education.
For the state legislature.
For the state legislature, so. And I mean, I, again, I think I've been a few years and I think normally, and not always, but so if someone's really interested in, you know, that's fine. It has been, I think generally the President has been put into that role, but it's not required, so someone has great.
I don't know many good profits.
I would like to nominate Rene Sayre.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so we have two nominees. You have a card in front of you, probably valid.
Rene. There's two nominees, go for one. You're done, pass them down to Sally as she will read them aloud.
These get processed by like a voting machine? Wow. Hold it one more time, Chuck.
There's 11,000 to vote.
So if there's.
Well, I think.
For one person and eight for another, that's normal, right?
Well, let's say that the Omaha Board had 120 some.
That's what I was gonna say. That was, that's not that many, that was not that many years ago.
No. You gotta read them out loud, Sally.
Oh, I do?
Yeah.
One for Rich, Rene, Rene. Rene. Rich. Rene.
So.
All right.
Rene, or Dr. Sayre, if you find that you have a conflict with the one meeting a year that it takes to November, then you can appoint a different delegate, so you could say, Rich, okay, does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So if you, it's, it's just important that we get our vote in because it's, this year is going to be another tough one with the legislature, so, okay.
Say it's, it's normally the Friday of the convention, Friday morning of the convention, so.
So the one this year was virtual, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, does there not, does there need to be a second or anything like that?
No.
The first.
No, because it was a vote, it's only on motion. Okay, no.
Okay, so we have committees. Again, there's. Oh, sorry. With someone.
Sally?
This is generally just an appointment, but it's okay, you can nominate it.
Second that nomination.
Rich is generally just.
Yes, yeah. So we appreciate, so we don't have a vote on that, so.
No.
Thank you again for your efforts, Sally, we do appreciate it. Okay, so again, we talked a little bit before the meeting as far as there's a, you know, sheet to, you know, mark down committees that you may wish to participate in. And again, there's a description with regard to all of the varying committees as well. So kind of utilize that in your thought process on something you may want to maybe have some strong feelings toward that you want to definitely be on. You know, most of them have at least two and some of them have three. You know, we've, you know, there's nothing says we can't have three, but three, it would be the limit on, on any parties to participate in the, on the committee. I will comment that there are times where we have, you know, a committee assigned, but individual has an issue going on, they can't make the meeting. They are free to call on another member of the Board to sit in for them to help discussion, et cetera. So that is something that does exist, so. And it's happened quite frequently, quite often, so. But again, so to, to turn that information into me, because I will go through and we'll make appointments prior to the next meeting, so. We didn't talk about, again, I know Brian has served on the Foundation Committee for a few years.
A while.
And done a good, very good job. And I know Virginia was on there and she also did a good job with that. So we will need definitely a nominee for that as well. So if that is a role you have, would like to participate in, you know, there's more involvement, you know, from that regard to, to, to chance to again, just get more involved with the community as, as well as the, the school district, so.
Those meetings are generally scheduled the first Monday of the month at noon. Occasionally, like on Labor Day, it goes to the second Monday, so you know, most of the way it bumps to the second, but most of them are the first Monday of the month at noon. And I meet every month.
And I did send an email out to the group this afternoon, I maybe you guys did or didn't get it, but that's per the bylaws of the Foundation. There's one of the members is our superintendent and two school board members need to sit on that foundation board. So with Virginia going off, we need two, two people from this group that are willing to do that, so.
I am interested in doing that.
Awesome.
Good. Okay. Where are we at here? All right, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, any items to call out or discussion?
No, I guess for board members, we give you a lot of different information on finances. And so there's, there's one that's called a summary report. And basically what that does is it shows you where the revenue comes in, where the expenses go, we only, we break them down so that it's just, it's an easy document to be able to look at. And you're going to be able to see, are you ahead of spending, behind spending? Budget look like you're going to make it, just some best summary sheet you got. It also does a two-year look back, it looks at cash balances, so you always know exactly what your cash balances are. When you deal in the millions, might not seem like that's an important thing to keep track of, but each fund has to fund itself. And so it's a good summary document. And then once you graduate from looking at that one, then you can look through and see how the rest of this broke now. Clear to the point, we don't give you the one that Penny works out of, that's thousands of lines, so of information. We give you pretty much the summaries of programs and so on, so, okay. There's also bills in there, you'll see all the bills that we pay each month and all the programs, there are 10 funds that you run from or you run out of. And on that summary sheet, you'll see each one of the funds. And so the bills that are in there, you'll see some get paid out of depreciation, some get paid out of building funds, some get paid out of general fund. And so when you look at the bills and then just a summary, this board also by policy has an identification that any bills over 5,000 are broken out. So there's a lot to take in as a new Board Member, how you're going to look at the finances. We're open to, Penny is here, I'm here to work with you, so.
I was gonna say, at times we've done training deals too, just to kind of get more familiar with some of that and.
We can do whatever we want.
Align something that way as well.
Okay. And then at the board meeting, all the minutes, the, the reports, because also all things that everybody reads ahead of time, that they're just done as a consent agenda item, okay.
No, yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Sayre?
Yes.
Bobrovic?
Yes.
A public forum. If we have anybody here that wishes to present to the Board, we will limit their comments to five minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to the student rep report.
All right, um, really not a whole lot is going on, like first of all, I apologize, we do have a student. But she was on vacation and then her backup got called to babysit me and nephews tonight and then her backup got called into work, so. So I'm sorry about that. Um, so let's see. The speech season is going to officially start on January 20th. They've already had a few like Zoom meets, but they get to actually go and meet in person on the 20th and they're super excited about that. Actually, some of our officers are at speech practice right now, which is why they also were not able to be here. Um, our home events are going really well. Our kids have heard a lot of like really great comments about the facility and just thought they're super proud of, of what that looks like now. And boys basketball beat York last week and that was super exciting for them and wanted to talk about that. The cheerleaders are supporting basketball at home, basketball and wrestling at home, but they're not traveling. Um, they are discussing the possibility of a snowball dance on January 22nd. We're hopeful that the COVID numbers kind of stay the same, so that they can have that. And then as far as student council goes, we're planning our big dog fall tournament, hopefully for February 26th, depending on what COVID looks like at that time. And this is our fundraiser for the local food pantry and then the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So students create teams and they play against each other. And then teachers volunteer to ref and it's just a fun night for the kids. Hopefully, fingers are crossed that we'll get to do it.
All right. I'm sure the kids are excited to be back in school, right?
Like pretty quiet, I think everyone's tired getting back into the routine, but.
Yeah, I can see that too. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have our policies. Someone want to make that motion? I'll make something. I move to reaffirm the existing policies, regulations and handbooks for the governance of the district. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion on that?
This year, it isn't our policies that we reaffirm those, but you guys adopt policies prior to the start of the school year and they're basically for that school year and we don't change policies unless it's required by law. So you had to adopt a policy and this fall, that was the only time, I think in several years that we've had to adopt policies throughout the year. But otherwise, just taking those existing policies. Dr. Sayre brought a couple of things because the table of contents don't necessarily match in some areas. And I've been in discussion with, with the NASB because they manage all of your board policies. So they're your policies, I just get the stuff from the attorneys and give them to you, you guys vote them in. But over the years, the thing that's happened is that some of the policies that have been removed haven't, are. Haven't, are still in the table of contents. So it looks like you got holes, but. There's no holes in your policy. It's just that the table of contents don't match. The other issue that's out there that they are supposed to keep up for us is that some of the cross references. Or policies have been removed or they recodified a policy to a different number, something changed in the law or. Um, policy was shifted or moved. And so he promised me today. That by February, your board book will be cleaned up. There's also one, one policy in there that is a. I don't know why it's that detailed, but there's a policy in there for. Or chain of command, which has like a hundred different steps in there. There's no policies in here that have people names. I don't know why they put people names in there. But I told him today, I said, that's a policy that in February, we're going to ask that the board accepts it without the names because. You're going to play heck to keep up in that policy because they don't know who the names are. And I don't, I don't understand why, why there are names in there in the first place, because it can be outdated tomorrow, okay? So he's, he's going to do the work before you guys have to plow through and do all the work yourselves in there, because you guys hire them to do that. And so the legal counsel does that. So to keep your policy manual up to date, so tonight, I guess I would recommend because of policy, because of your policy. That you leave everything alone until we make those changes. And then once you get a policy committee in, then that policy committee can decide, we want to go through section by section. We want to do it however, but. But, um, as far as the policies that are in there, he assured me that. All the policies recommended by the attorneys, any changes in policies that are all in there, it's just that, that part of it's not. And he also said COVID's keep, kept them out of the office. I mean, whatever reason, but still we gotta have our policy manual, it's good. The one thing that I just haven't done is when I, when I want something, I just go in and. Search and then it pulls the policies for me. So, so that part works good, but. But we gotta have a table of contents that matches, so thanks for bringing it up.
I appreciate that you've worked on that.
But, but that, that's a policy service that, that you pay for, so you should be getting it good.
Okay, any other comments or questions with regard to that? Okay, Sally, call the roll.
Yes.
Misha.
Yes.
Marina. Yes.
Sayer.
Yes.
Bobertchek.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Food service van.
I move to approve the purchase of a food service van as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Normally these things go through the vehicle placement cycle. There's a whole cycle out there that takes over vehicles. But this was a grant that was written. The van, the quoted van is thirty-seven thousand without the rebates on it yet, so. Whatever the total price will be after rebates, but, um, and so because they got that grant. We didn't have it in our cycle, so I. Um, visited with Rich and the other people on the transportation and said, we need to get this for board approval. Because it's not on any plan. If the audit would see that this was done without being approved somewhere, you know, so. Even if it didn't actually cost the district, it's still a grant, so. Anyway, it's from, it's from, uh. From Ryaniki, there, they, they bid two vans on the state list price. And one of them was an all-wheel drive and we didn't think it was worth five thousand more to put an all-wheel drive vehicle in there for food service, so it's. Pretty much paid for out of the grant. The, the van that is replacing in food service, we are really one short in the custodial maintenance and so. We could trade it, but we just lose the grant because if, because the grant's not going to give us anymore. So. Right now, we're just going to keep it in our fleet for custodial. We're paying mileage and the person wants some. Insurance and everything else out of it, but it's just better that we. Use it as a, as a maintenance van. When they do use our vehicles, then they use the ones that we transport students in. And so they take the seats out and so on. This is just a better deal for right now.
A little more feasible from that perspective, yeah. Yeah, I don't have to create lots of work to, to utilize something, so. Like you said, it wouldn't, wouldn't gain anything from trying to trade it in, so. Okay, any other questions on that? Sally?
Yes.
Yes.
Bobertchek?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenuza?
Yes.
Okay. Sale of the four R school site.
Richard, we could table this for a little while because Chris kind of wants to wait a little while. He wants to be here longer, he said.
Is that long, is that long enough?
Well, we got to make the motion before we table it, right? So. I, I'll move to approve the real estate sale of four R school site. Legally described as the property in part of the northeast quarter, section four, township seventeen, range four. Colfax County, Nebraska, containing three acres. And authorizing Rich, uh, Roberts to sign the warranty deed and all real estate documents.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Chris, would you like to comment on that or?
There's any questions? They also sold the personal property contents and I, I submitted that money to a Dr. Hazing. And so I think it was a really good event.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think, uh, yeah, we were all a little bit surprised with what we did get, which was. Great. And then again, the other on top of it, that's just a little bit more to be happy about, so. And again, somebody's going to get a good benefit out of the building as well, so.
I have one question, where did the school bell go? Do you know exactly where it went?
I guess his grandfather, I may not have this totally correct, but I'm going to get close. His grandfather, if you saw the bell, it had four R welded on it, I guess. I learned a lot of history and doing this. Um, I'm, I'm saying there was a bell out there previously that got stolen. And so then when they redid it, uh, his grandfather did the welding on it, welded the four R and welded it down and. The brackets and everything, so he had some kind of. Versus.
I knew there was a lot of interest in the community, so I wondered if it left the community or if it didn't get to stay.
Yep, add in, in the, uh. Rachel Orange, uh, bought the merry-go-round and they had some family tie back to the creation of the house, so. So that's standard and.
Thank you. Good. Chris, one question I had from a number of people that were participating in the bidding, that, so the, the, the site was. An online auction, but then the personal property was, was sealed bid. So can you, can you explain why we did it that way?
Yeah, so it's, you have a couple options. Number one, you could do, uh, well, COVID and all live options are kind of a little. They kind of frown on them. I guess they're not really banning them, but your attendance policy, it's all kind of weird. Um, versus putting it on to, uh, the auction site, which would have, it had some cost to it. Uh, one thing we saw with the sealed bids is we got phenomenal bids on stuff that we would not have gotten at an auction. Um, for example, last time we did auction off some tables, I think I saw one brought twenty-five bucks. Um, we sold four of them for four hundred bucks and then another four hundred, four of them for two hundred dollars. Uh, and then the balance of them brought twenty-five dollars. Um, so it just brought phenomenal dollars this way. Because people really wanted it. You only get one shot at doing it. I didn't charge you to do that part of this operation. Uh, and so I think you'd raise dollars, you win the god. Um, you know, whoever would have bid two hundred, then the next person would have bid two oh one and, uh, it'd have been done. Uh, just for an example, so I think all in all, you, it really generated several dollars, I mean, eleven thousand five hundred some bucks.
Thanks for the explanation.
So yeah, some people, when you get one shot at it, you decided like they wanted those four tables. They really went after them, got them. Um, and so, uh, so then we had to control those bids and put them in bidder order and, and. Some people bid on twenty things and got five and some people bid on eight things and got eight, you know? And some people bid on a lot of stuff and didn't get any of it, so. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think we're, the district, I think it should be fairly, fairly well pleased on the, the outcome of the whole event, so. Appreciate your efforts.
Ronnie and the custodians worked through a lot of grass. I'm getting this thing cleaned up and set up and. Great job. So those guys spent a lot of time out there getting things orderly and ready for that sale, so.
Yeah.
Good, good job, Chris, and for working with those guys, I'm getting it.
There were a couple items that were left doors, some like these doors here that were, you know, that were busted. And so no frames to them. They were just glass metal doors like this that nobody bid on. And, uh, I did have a guy that brought a trailer, uh, that had, uh. They kind of fit his load per se. And so he asked if he could have those four doors and I'm like, yeah. Before you had staff come out, try and get rid of them and take them to the dump and get rid of them. I'm like, yeah, they kind of fit your trailer, take those four doors. And so we got rid of a couple of the things at the end that had no value and we would have spent more time and dump fees, get rid of them. We got rid of those four doors. So other than that, everything else, but, so.
That, that's work.
Appreciate that. Okay, Sally, go ahead and call the roll.
Marina?
Yes.
Sayer?
Yes.
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenuza?
Yes.
Misha.
Yes.
We'll take a little time because.
So nothing changed from that.
Yeah.
Previous meeting.
Sign for its kind of community schools. Rich A. Roberts. Are you a citizen?
I am. Thank you, sir.
I thank you all. Nice job, Chris. Chris.
Alright. Okay. F resignations.
Move to accept staff resignations. Thanking them for their service to the district and wishing pass.
Is there a second? They moved and seconded. Discussion on that?
No, that's our first retirement for this year. A long time, so it's. I did attach, I always attach the resignation letter so you can read it.
And Jasmine will be retiring from a position but taking another as far as a doing student teaching. Will that be?
She is student teaching and then I'm.
Yeah.
She did have to resign. Things with, with colleges and say you can't get paid to student teach unless you were the transition program. So she went through the traditional program and so she has, she had resigned for this semester to. To teach and she does have a student teaching assignment in the elementary. Because we're figuring, she couldn't take an assignment where she was, where she was working, so.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, call the roll, Sally.
Sayer?
Yes.
Yes.
Lenuza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Marina? Yes.
Alright, uh. Would move to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two superintendent's contract as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? We met. A week ago-ish, somewhere in there.
Before the new year.
Before the new year and, uh, had some discussions of different things and it was, it was a good discussion. Um, and I, I think, you know, the review that we had conducted in, uh, December, we talked about some of the things that were on there. Um, and, you know, as far as goals that still are outstanding for the district and, and, uh. And, uh, the desire and fire that, that Dr. Hazing has, uh, to continue, uh. Working for the district and, and, you know. Again, going after the, the goals that we have established. Uh, and will continue to establish to, to pursue. Other comments?
I guess when I first got to sit on the budget and finance committee, I, I kind of had to, I was confused a bit on the, the two-year contract and had to get myself. Familiar with that, that, you know, Dr. Hazing prior, at this time is already under contract for the next school year, but this is. Extending that another year and I guess it's, to me, I do feel that's important just because as we go through this. You know, planning and strategic planning, that's, we're not making plans for just next year. We're making plans for two years out, three years out, five years out and. To have that stability and consistency, I believe is, is important, so. That's why the committee is recommending to continue what we've done in the past and, uh, offer that to your contract.
I think it's very important we have a two-year contract because then that doesn't leave us in lurch and he also is, is, uh. Has an opportunity to work for us. I think, uh, personally, I would extend it more than two years, but. I don't think he says he wants to be more than two years, but. I, I think, uh. The, what we gave the superintendent is. Probably not, he, not reflecting. As much he, as much as he's done for the district. In the education of our students and the building of our staff. And, uh, definitely our. Buildings and infrastructure that we have in the, here now. I believe we're very fortunate to have this man as our superintendent. And, uh, I hope he sticks around for a long time yet.
I don't know if there's any questions or comments that anybody else wants to share.
I'm actually, I, I just, I'm a little concerned about, no offense, giving you a raise when we are sitting here on priority status. Uh, it's a huge concern because that's a huge marker of our performance as a community and our school. Um, I, I stop and I look, I mean, I'm in a world where I've had to take pay cuts the last several years. Because healthcare has changed so much, um. That, to me, that is a very difficult thing to do when we are in a, a place where we are being. I, I guess we're on a hotspot because of the priority status. So that is a concern for myself, um. Superintendent salaries have tripled in twenty years and I know school teacher salaries have not even come close to keeping up with the doubling too, so that's. So that's another big concern I have, are we looking at doing similar things for our others?
I guess I have a question for you on that point. Do you feel our teachers are underpaid?
Yes.
Do you realize that we're almost at the top of the array of our schools that we. And we have, we have situations where we have. A wide little area where we can put them in. Okay, just. Just remind by information.
There is variation there, I'm not gonna argue with it, but you know, from a, you know, Chuck is pointing out too, just. From where we're at in in. The negotiations component with this with staff too, I think that's, I think we have been fair. And clearly even with with how we approach things. You know, but you know, it's every, you know, we're entitled to our opinions too, so I respect that as well, so.
And I do appreciate you sharing your comments and your and your concerns, I guess, I just look back to. You know, give my comment on. Stability and and our last superintendent search. We struggled to get. An adequate pool of quality candidates and and. Stability and retention of of our. Quality employees is is important as well, so it's. Looking at both sides of the ledger and what the right balance is, is challenging to to find, but. That's where the raise is not. On if, whether you want to go on a percentage. Way of figuring it or not, it it's not as much of a percentage as what certified staff got and. I guess that's where we came up, struck the, what we've, whether we're attempting to be a fair balance.
Other comments? Sally, go ahead and call the roll. Yes.
Lenuza?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Marina?
No.
No?
No.
Sarah?
No.
Yes.
All right, Priority School update.
All right, I'm getting there.
Doctor Lefton, you're out there?
Hello, everybody?
Turn him up.
All right, I had some stuff for you guys on there, pardon my voice. A quick run through, did some things just in December with KOK, really, we're just rolling what we did from November over. We've had some great meetings with with the team, but a little short write-up for you, I apologize that the link didn't work for you guys. I I think Dr. Hazing put that on there as a picture, so if you have any other questions with that, please come and see me. Be happy to sit down with you guys and kind of run through it and how that process works. Just good things. Twenty-one is coming up in February, that's kind of our focus right now. With our newcomers program and just kind of seeing how things iron out with that, so we're excited about where our students are and. Jim or Steven, you guys have anything like that?
I would just mention, we have again meetings on Thursday and Friday. Those have been primarily Zoom meetings up to this point because of COVID. You know, we really think when we get a chance to meet in person. Those will be more productive meetings, but until things are where we feel that that's safe for our staff and students. We'll continue to have Zoom meetings, so. Yeah, it's going well.
So there was a report in the, there's like a forty-page report, is that what you were working on?
Yes, so the the score is the scoring on the rating scale one that's in there. That would be the. We have to sit down with our team and then with the Priority School KOK team. And we go through and rate how we feel like we're where we're at with each of the categories. It's actually this last one that we did was probably one of the most, I thought, just thought-provoking and. Really gave us a lot of good direction and kind of some highlights and good things we did and a couple areas that we still need to focus on and work on and. I, yeah, it was, it's a good, it's a long report, so I'd say if you have any big questions, so just come on in and sit with me sometime and I'd be more happy to go over it with you.
Yeah, there was a couple pages I had marked on the, just to kind of talk through, but I, yeah. One of the items was, you know, with regard to intervention protocols that we put into place, I mean. I guess are those all developed on our side or is that, are those some of the things that they also present as far as, you know, the best. Best methodology of resolving some of the issues?
Yeah, so the intervention protocol portion, so the protocols we developed this last spring. We worked on them as small subgroups and then brought them together as the whole group with KOK. State Department representatives, ESU representatives, as well as our team here. And we went through that process of just trying some things out of maybe things we hadn't thought about before. Really what that does is it creates an environment where if we're not here, those protocols can still take place. There's definitely some tweaking that needs to be done still on those on those protocols for the first year, of course. But I feel like we have a good grasp, we're piloting some different strategies right now with a few teachers. And trying to get some buy-in from across the board and we'll kind of see how it shakes out. Any other ones, Rich, did you had any questions on?
Well, I also had with regard to some of the graphs with regarding. You know, student failing and graduation rates, I think some of them were. Across multiple years and 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 maybe some of them involved where graduation occurred, maybe five, six, seven years after. You know, you know, as far as a total, I guess I wanted probably best to sit and look at those and and have you talk through that.
And I'm actually talking about different, different sheet, I apologize, you're talking about the priority plan document and I'm talking about the rating scale, so. Yeah, if you want to just swing in, Rich, come on over and I'd be happy to sit down and run through those with you. Many of those graphs that are on there and I have not been updated for this semester, that's what we're currently working on right now. And we'll actually utilize the school Zilla program that Dr. Hazing brought or that we brought together as a team. And we'll use that school Zilla to really pull all that data now, a lot of this data that's on there is hand-done data. And it just gets a little bit tough, so hopefully we'll have even better reports for you next time.
And that that ratings document. I guess maybe it was my internet or computer, I tried pulling it up earlier today, it was pretty much unreadable for me and so. And I was just trying to pull it up now and it's loading really slow, I don't know if that's something that could be. Emailed out to us, some sometimes through the. And the NASB site, it's difficult to pull up some of those documents, but it was pretty much unreadable to me.
So on there, just hit download and it'll download and it'll put it on your desktop as a PDF.
Yeah, I think Dr. Hazing has that.
Yeah, you've you've explained that to me before.
Because a lot of the stuff, you can't get it big enough to, how they read it.
Thanks for the reminder again.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't get through it at work, I just couldn't get through the firewall at work, so, but I didn't try it from home, so.
If you can't ever open a document, I can, I have paper, but when it comes out on a nine-by-ten, it's still not big enough to read. You need it on a screen where you can stretch it because it's a big, bigger document. And when Dr. Lefton put it up there, I couldn't get it. Because there's passwords to get in and so there's, there's student security records, I can't give the passwords out. Because it gives more information, so that's why I ended up having to put a screenshot on there. And then you can hit the download button and it'll download onto your desktop and you can make a read. For those who don't understand the Priority School, there's several things, one of them is a graduation rate. But you have to also understand, we have some kids that come in here as freshmen. And they can't get through in four years if they don't speak English, and so that hurts us first. The second thing is that we have some students who are high-needs special ed kids. And the high-needs special ed kids do do not get funding until they're twenty-one. And so if they were to graduate in four years, they at eighteen, they'd have three years of no funding for them. And so they're, they stay in school until they're twenty-one, well, if you graduate them at eighteen with their IEPs. They can't come back, that's a terminal document. And so those kids are on five, six, seven years, just simply until they get to turn twenty-one, they may meet their IEPs. But, and I'm sure you see that over in Columbus, that, you know, that everybody's gonna have some of those kids who show up, so. The good thing is that we have some kids who will stay in for five, six or seven years. Okay, and so. We want to get as many through as fast as we can, obviously, the other thing is that we we require one more semester. Than almost every school outside of Columbus in the state of Nebraska. So when we compare with Lincoln and Omaha and other places, this school still has more graduation requirements. Year one semester more. And so getting these kids through or who are struggling. Also fighting the one semester more, this is the first year we've gone to eight periods. And we're hoping that that will help us be able to make up some of that ground for one semester, but at the same time, it's, you know. Chronic absentee rates during COVID, oh my goodness, I don't know how you're gonna. Fight through all of those issues. The ELL program, we probably have the most developed ELL program right now, but it's still, when you get. Thirty percent of your kids show up in a year for the first time in our country, you're not gonna be able to move fast off of that. It takes them five years to get the, get the language to where they can get at the high school language and compete. So I'm not gonna say that our teachers are poor teachers in there, that we don't have the right curriculum. What I'm saying is that we do have some barriers that that might force us to have to do things differently than other places. Doesn't make us bad, but it's just that we have to have the data and I think the high school. The teachers and the administrators are working hard to try to break down all that information. Our kids who are at the top of the scale are scoring at the top of the scales they always have. And. But we do have a larger middle group. And we have a group toward the middle bottom that that's where the Priority School focuses on. So. Do any of us like that we're a priority school? No, we think that we got put in there for reasons that are beyond our control, but. We were there with the promise, so they do come in and they work with us on things that we can do to ensure that we have high-quality instruction. So we'll never turn away help, but at the same time. The Priority School people do come in, they work hard with our staff, I know that. When they come, they work mostly with our administrators, they do a few things with our staff, but it's mostly with our administrators. The one thing that we will do better, because we've got the program, School Zilla. To help us be able to take not just one piece of data, but to be able to take. More pieces of data and line it up to see what's the real cause of why this child's not not doing well in school. Is it attendance, is it what, so we can see how they are scoring in multiple places for us to be able to pull data. That's real and it can't be us trying to manipulate data or accusing that, that's where the. That's what we are ahead of the game in from most schools. So.
And then we're just implementing that part.
Just putting it in right now, yeah.
We talked about it in December, so.
Can you give me a number of what comes into our school, the high school, that are non-speaking English?
Non-speaking or ELL, because it's.
Non-speaking English.
I, I don't know if they even have those numbers up there.
Okay.
I know one year we had about, we had a huge influx, Cargill. Were hired and we had a huge influx of non-English speakers first time.
I believe at one time we had forty students come into the school that were non-speaking.
Oh, yeah, we had at least.
And so I guess when you have non-speaking. And they come into the school in, let's just say they come in in September. And they take a test in January and they're non-speaking. They have to take that test, whether they can speak, read or anything. And I don't understand how anybody could be non-speaking and take a test. And be expected to pass it. I guess it, I guess you could expect that to happen, but I don't believe it's ever gonna happen anywhere because. These children or kids, whatever you want to call them, don't speak the language and yet they're required to take this test. That they're graded on, that we are graded on, and that is where we're losing so much of our credit. Because we've got kids that can't speak, can't say hello, couldn't say hello to any one of us. Or thank you or goodbye, and they still have to take that test and they're graded upon that, so. I mean, I think, I think we've got some phenomenal teachers. And I think we have some very good administration that is trying to help these teachers do the best they can. But when you have. Students come into your classroom or walk into a store and they can't say hello, goodbye, whatever. And you expect them to take a test that's in English and it may even be in their native language. But some of them can't read their native language. But those, we are still graded as a school district on those. Children taking the test, so I don't think it's a fair analysis of what really goes on in our school. But it's the way it is and that's what we have to put up with.
Thanks for trying to understand that piece.
Excuse me?
Thanks for trying to understand that piece because that's a huge one. And not just for the student, but also for the families.
Well, of course.
So I do believe that, you know, our teachers do a tremendous jobs trying to get through the barrier. But I think as a district, we also need some more representation, helping the teachers, helping the families. So I really think that we need more, some kind of different program to help and to assist that communication piece.
This is the first year that we have the expanded newcomer program, where they spend a half a day solely in English. When you have a high school like we have, what was happening is those kids didn't need to speak English. And while having two languages is a great asset, they, or right now to compete in schools, they need to get. Their language acquisition faster. And that's where our newcomer program is right now, we do have room right now to break those kids out for half-day programs and. So we do have that program this year, working on reading and math for half a day. And then they can transition into the high school for their other credits, but. But they're working in that program now, because we could break it out, we have a place to go with them, we didn't have a place to go because of our. Facilities, we just never. So hopefully we'll see what the changes are this year with the Alpha Twenty-One scores and and how our kids do do in school, so. Anyway, the state's been in working, so just so you know the priorities, that's. At school.
School calendar, yeah, so.
This will be, we'll work with staff, there's a next Monday and Tuesday. This will be, we'll work with staff. There's a next Monday and Tuesday. Yeah, the workshop schedule has a place for input on all the different strategic planning things. That calendar is one of them where the union. Gets to give their input into the school calendar as well. I just posted it out here, it's the same calendar, of corresponding dates, but. Um, in February, we'll bring the recommendations and then in March, send the board's ops calendar for the next year, so. We've got some time, but initial one goes up and you get to. And staff will make recommendations from that.
Principals reports.
We do principals reports a little bit differently than a lot of schools. We try to highlight our staff. In our principal report and directory report, so whether it's a highlight program or spotlight program or spotlight staff. One of some staff members that are recognized every month. Um, and so. We generally try to get to this point, Richard looked at, give us some positive. Down the line.
Yeah, mine's Mitzi Santos. Mitzi does a great job for us. Mitzi's been with us for quite a few years, but she runs. The lunchroom really as far as. All the technology and setting everything up. She just really goes above and beyond everything. That she does, so. I just really wanted to say thank you to her and. And thank you for all she does.
We got now, Darlene?
Ms. Neeson?
Okay.
She out there?
Yep. Um, so. For last month, I really wanted to highlight, um, the work of Mrs. Nicole Taylor and she's married now, so she has the height of Learman. Um. For her really creative work and collaboration that she's done to make sure that students are still able to have a holiday concert. And be able to share it with their families and videotape it and. Um, being able, since we weren't allowing families to come in and then even to, um. Just still letting kids have that experience. So. She and there's a lot of other teachers who went into the work, but. Really Nicole did a lot of the legwork of. Working with our nurses to make sure that everything was still safe for our kids. Um, so. Huge kudos to her.
Miss Bev. I have two things. Um, first of all, I wanted to do a shout out to Pinnacle Bank when we got back from Christmas break this year. We had a hundred and seventy five dollar check. Um, as a donation toward the after school program and they have been a support of ours since the beginning of the after school program. And so just their continued support is wonderful. Um, and then I also wanted to highlight Mrs. Banks. She is my head teacher out at Richland, so. She has to take care of everything on the days that I'm not out in that school. And some of the times when I am out there and she just always does, she's so efficient and she works so well with those kids and. It's just always coming to me with, um, did you see this growth that this student had? And. So it's just exciting to see her so excited about her students. And their growth and then it's just a blessing to have someone that I can count on. Um, no matter what.
Bad hands?
Uh, I would just like to highlight the, uh, our three custodians, Rick, Glory and Miguel. Uh, they do a great job of getting our gym set up for competitions at the middle school, getting everything disinfected. Um, and then just keeping the classrooms clean and safe for our kids every day, so. Uh, we wouldn't get, we wouldn't have gotten as far as we got this year without. Um, all of our custodians, but I wanted to really shout out to our three at the middle school.
Mr. Zavala, I don't know if he's on, is that a basketball?
No, I'm here now.
Okay.
Yep. So the staff that, um, uh, I'd like to highlight is Mrs. Hall. Um, in the last couple of months, she's put in a ton of time and work this year using our Strive platform in order to. Give a, a way for our parents to watch their students perform, especially, you know, when we have had. Um, less, um, attendance. I know a couple of. When attendance restrictions were really high, we weren't able to have anybody in the middle school and she was able to set up Strive for our. Um. Home wrestling meet and we also strived our middle school, um, vocal and band concerts. So without her expertise, you know, I don't think we would have been able to share these with everyone. She's kind of the district level strive as well. We've also been talking this week about how we're gonna strive some things. Varsity wise later in the week since, um, we have teams going to multiple different places, so. Really thankful, I mean, she's Skyler all the way and she works her tail off in order to make everything that she does great, so. Um, other than that, our, our staff's really excited to work on strategic plan here in the upcoming PD. I know we've shared that in the last. School improvement meeting, so we're excited for that process.
Mr. Zavala, in your report, you talked about, um, eighth graders taking citizenship, citizenship tests, that. Kind of caught my eye. Can you speak on that a little bit more, please?
Yeah, just talking with Mr., uh, that's Mr. Pulisic in eighth grade. He has all of his eighth grade students take that citizenship test. Um, it really opens a lot of their eyes because. And, you know, especially, you know, we have an interesting, uh, political environment right now, but. Those kids get to, I guess, learn about our country, not only history wise, but also how the, the structure of the government works. And I, I think it opens a lot of our kids' eyes is to think, well, this is. It's a, it's a fairly difficult test and he teaches them and gets them ready for it and. He tries to make, I mean, he's worked, he was working real hard the last couple of weeks, cause. Um, we had some kids out on medical leave, um, you know, for exposures and. Um, they came back from holiday break and he's, you know, calling them in and keeping them late and keeping them over lunch, making sure they. Every single one of our eighth graders gets that citizenship test done. So he was telling me about that and the process and. I really like to thank him for doing that, cause that is one of the state requirements, so.
Thank you. That's a part of the. There were three choices. And as part of our curriculum work, our social studies teachers did choose. To do that both, they have to do it at the eighth grade level and then once again sometime in high school. They will do that actually part of one of the high school courses, required courses for such things. Great. This class.
Yeah, um, I'll talk a little bit about our, uh, librarians and the work that they do to, uh. Help assist our students with resources and working on projects and they do a great job. Uh, the other group that. Uh, I really, uh, you know, I've always known and, and we know that substitute teachers are an important part. Of the process, but this year they have become even more important. Uh, to deliver that instruction to our students on a daily basis, so, uh, um, I appreciate. Uh, those that have, uh, braved the COVID and they come in and, and, uh, continue to help us out. Um, you know, when they can and when they're needed, so I really appreciate that as well and. And, uh, all the things that are going on in our district with finishing up winter sports and, and speech season. Uh, and those types of things.
The program I'd like to acknowledge is our counseling group. They truly have developed programs with the students in mind. Generally care about where, how they do in class, outside of the class. Uh, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Beltran. Do a great job with our kid prepared for college. Or next level work. They're always working with the kids and doing a great job. I'd like to say one more thing with Joel Carrillo, like to recognize him. Working with the newcomers group. He taught math for us for one year and was going to leave. And Dr. Leftall asked him, please reconsider this new program with newcomers. And it really in, in throw and. Wanted to do well in that. Um, he has genuine rapport and respect to those kids. He has his bilingual skills that can work with them. He's getting this program to move forward. Thank you for the acknowledgement now.
Let's quickly hit some directors. Heather talked about the. After school program already, Ms. Neeson's got. Youth program, anybody got any?
Yeah, I also just wanted to give a big shout out to, um, Coach Brent Hayes. He was really dedicated to our, um, girls' basketball program. Starting from kindergarten to middle school to get them going and watching. The freshman girls last week and how they just out hustled, out rebound, even though they were. A total head and shoulder shorter than everyone else. They worked way harder than their opponent and. His hard work is, is showing and. A lot of applause to him because that takes a lot of time to build athletes when. It, when you have to start that young, so he's doing a really good job.
Middle school, you got anything else to add?
Um, no, just very happy with our middle school coaches, uh, Ms. Cruz and Ms. Richard, Mrs. Richards. Um, getting the girls competing in a, uh. League in Lake, at Lakeview, um, giving them extra opportunities to play and develop their skills. And then for middle school boys basketball, we start, uh, next week. On the nineteenth, we host Central City, so that'll be our first game of the season and we're just looking forward to seeing what our kids can do. In the next month.
Mr. Cost, you got a, got a neat thing coming?
Yeah, um, first I'll, I'll talk about our wrestling program. I had seven and five in there and in duels and. Um, they were able last week to win six duels. They went six and O. Uh, they beat SCOTUS. And, uh, then, then won the tournament this weekend with a five and O showing, so, um. They had a great week. They're coming off of winning their last two tournaments. Um, uh, that's, uh, really a testament to, uh, to that program and the guys that are working in there as well. As our young ladies, uh, they were second place at Winnebago tournament. So, uh, a lot of success going on, uh, in that program and, and a shout out to, to all of their efforts. Uh, did mention, uh, Mr. Burish as one of our janitors, uh, just, you know, doing an excellent job. You know, sometimes I, I think he feels a little overwhelmed, probably because he is. But, uh, boy, the guy never complains and just works his tail off to make sure that our facilities are, are looking great, so I appreciate that. Um, I will mention, uh, big week this week, two basketball games. Uh, it's already been mentioned, our boys team beat York, which is always good. They were also runner up in the, uh, holiday tournament. Um, they also have two games this week. And, uh, in Seward and West Point, but then, uh, Thursday, we have a home duel. Friday. Uh, we have our JV and girls, uh, wrestling tournament, um, a number of teams attending that and then. Um, Saturday, we will just have our varsity tournament. We've actually reduced that to eight teams, uh, per the NSA A. Um, recommendation. And as you can see with that list, you know, teams coming from Scotts Bluff and, and Lexington and, and quite a distance. To travel to our tournament because, uh, it's really good competition and, uh, it's always been a very well-run tournament, so. Those are the things that are going on in the, uh, uh, activity department, but. I do want to just spend a little bit of time of that, that late edition I had, uh, on there. Uh, it's not that often that you. Uh, go to, uh, your mailbox and open up a letter from a lawyer. And, uh, you know, you're amazed at, at what you see in there, but, uh, for those of you that may have not known or did know. Uh, David Grolik, also known as Fuzz Grolik, um, passed away recently and, uh, he. Uh, his estate and, and within his will, uh, he wanted to, uh, make a sizable donation to our. Uh, athletic program and, and that was in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And, uh, I, I will tell you, uh, I had a chance growing up to hear a lot of the stories about his football days. Uh, way back in the, uh, uh, sixties. And late fifties and, and, uh, uh, for my dad and uncles and then got to know him and. Uh, he was a true warrior through and through. Uh, he loved his football, uh, teammates and. And loved Skylar and, and lived here his whole life and, and, uh, uh, really, uh, uh. You know, really humbled by, uh, him thinking of us, uh, you know, in, in, in his passing and, and a thank you to his. Family and, and, uh, you know, we'll find something to honor, uh, his memory through our athletic department, but it was, it was a really nice. Gesture and I wanted to make sure that all of you knew that as well.
Dr. Leftall. Still there?
Um, I have just a few things. I just want to tell everybody how great of a job all the, uh, janitorial staff and maintenance staff are doing at the high school. They have a ton of stuff to do and everything looks just great. Uh, but I also want to thank Dr. Gibbons or acknowledge Dr. Gibbons and Mr. Drogi. Um, just for the work that they're doing on that agenda for next week's, uh, professional development. Um, we are blessed in this district to have great professional development and, um, it's at the. Work of, uh, those two guys and Dr. Hazing and putting all that stuff together, so we're looking forward to that, but I appreciate the extra work they do. Thanks.
Ms. Urban?
My shout out goes to Tyrell. Right, he teaches math at the middle school and he has grown unbelievably. As a teacher, he's an excellent coach. He builds a relationship. So, and him and Bernice over there are just a rock solid team. I love working with them.
Dr. Gibbons?
So I was, um, highlighting out my, uh, school improvement team, uh, the work that they're doing to. It, it was tough for us to get action plans going this year in terms of improving our, or, or all those. Uh, or language arts, math. You know, we didn't have end of the year testing last year at all. With some kids being remote and others not, it was tough getting tested this year, so. Uh, but we were sitting with our. We do have action plans in place. We're working on within this next few weeks of getting them posted within the buildings and getting. Um, I, I talked about that charts that will. Demonstrate how we're doing on those. That's a goal to get that done soon this year, so. Uh, the members there were, um, at the elementary school. Each building has their own. These are the people that are chairperson of each. Uh, but each building has a, has a set of, um. As, as a committee, this is the chair, these are the chairs, which are at the elementary school, Alicia Kern, second grade teacher. Fisher School, Catherine Luce, she's in the, uh, upper grades. Um, Riston School is Lisa Terrell and I think she's second and third.
Second and fourth.
Second, third, fourth, excuse me, okay. Uh, middle school is Bill Pulitski, uh, the, the eighth grade. Uh, social studies teacher and at the high school, Alexa Stevenson and Nick Wilcock, old science teachers, uh, share the chair duties there.
Couple of things to hit. Sally's my highlight. She's been in the district and serves as activity fund manager. Recording secretary for the board. I was hoping she'd get put back in there. She does a great job of helping manage all the information that goes in. She does also a great job of purchase orders and doctors and all the things that classroom teachers need in a timely manner. They go, they put in something, but she'll always research to see is there a. Is there a better item? Is it, is there more prospectively to do this? So she does a great job of managing all that. The other things that I'll hit in here, strategic planning process, and I did put a summary document, which is a summary from all of the. Unity and the staff thought exchanges that were put in. The teaching committee from the, with the reps from each building. What happens with thought exchanges, get people to put their ideas in and then their colleagues get to rate whether or not they think it's a high priority. And so the highest priorities. Put into this sheet, this document from our, from our. Committee that looks at what are the areas that they're really talking about. So you'll see that there are some things that were recommended by staff, some things by the community. Next week, um, in our strategic planning, they'll be able to sit down with the staff who are interested in each one of those areas and talk about. What action plans could you recommend to the board that we could put in that would help us address. Um, those priorities. Those priorities and then identify by staff and that community. So this, along with our current strategic plan. Because there are some things that will go off. Obviously, there'll be some things that go on. And so I think we're in the third year of the reading, so that will probably end up. I'm not sure if there's any unfinished things in the reading part yet, but. But there are some things that rotate off if they're already completed. And so in that strategic plan, they'll look at this and we'll build that plan. Once we get those recommendations put together, then it goes back to the board because it's actually your plan. We did self-organize it. So we get input from people. Parents and staff and then. The committee looks at what are they really asking with all the input and then. We, we bring it back to them to say, okay, this is what we think you're asking. How do we put together action plans that will help us move in these areas? There's a draft workshop schedule that I also attached here for next week. It'll be finalized on Wednesday morning from that committee. There's a district COVID report, but I also put one today because for the first time, we have one positive in our district, which is really, the nurses do a great job. And we're down to one positive case in the district right now. Work comp mod, which is a big thing for us, three hundred employees. Even my work comp mod down. I mean, we've been in one point one three, one point one five. We're at one point zero five. Last year we were one point zero seven. So that determines your rates that you pay for your work comp insurance. So. We do have a safety inspection coming next week. This company that we have is from Homeland Security from the state of Nebraska. Was also the head of state patrol and so they come out and they try to break into our buildings and then they go in and they. Look and see all the safety issues and then they put together a report for us at the end. So because we have this building this year and. The additions to the high school will be interesting to see how, how the changes that we've hopefully addressed. And help improve our security. So I have. Board committee?
Mr. Aubrey Check, foundation report.
School Foundation met a week ago Monday. I don't have my notes in front of me as far as what in particular to highlight. I guess discussed about needing to have. Additional board member to participate and, and with the document that will turn into rich, you know, if anybody's interested, please mark that down. Nina, I'm glad that you're interested, but. It's been a program that, that has expanded over the last ten years and. And I think like all programs in our school, it's doing some good things, but it's got room to do more and, and some fresh ideas would be welcome. So. I guess that's really all I have unless you got something to add, Dr. Hazing. I, I will highlight Joyce Ballmer sits on the education committee of the foundation and, and we're charged with. Reviewing the nominations for the staff of the, the quarters and, and of the, the year and. And I guess some, you know, you, sometimes you hear, you gotta be careful what you ask for and we've, we've asked, you know, for help with Dr. Hazing, the administrators to. Bring in nominations and then. I think we had, I don't know, like sixty pages of documents to read through for. Of nominations. So it was great how many people are being highlighted and recognized for the, the good work that they're doing. So thanks to all those that did the nominations, but it. There's, it's, it takes some time to read through all the great things said about the employees, but, but it's enjoyable to, to read about. You know, students and staff and peers speaking highly of each other.
All right, thank you. And again, you know, Brian, normally like you said, the foundation meets generally monthly, so. That is something too, as we develop the committees and have a meeting that we'll request that there is comments made at the meeting. Sometimes there's no actionable items, of course, but it's just good to share the discussion, generalized discussion of, of what occurred and. Go down that path.
All right. I don't know if we have any other correspondence items. If none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second? Who's seconded? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.